Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus. This meeting of the town of Berlin's selectmen will be conducted by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a technological means. The town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel, and approved minutes will be posted to my town government. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways with both audio and video access or by telephone and audio only. And should any board member have technical difficulties or lose access to the meeting, the meeting will recess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date agreed to by a majority of the board or adjourned until our next scheduled meeting. So we'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. Meetings of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on both Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice, image, and/or telephone number may be recorded. So we have approval of the April 27 meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
And seconded.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. Keith, aye?
Roy Saki, aye.
Stone, aye.
Okay, thank you. We have no correspondence this evening, Margaret?
No, none this evening.
All right. Is there any general public comment? I don't see any.
So without cue and without the chat function, folks would have to know how to raise their hand from the audience. We've got June Polin, Ornella Quinn, Janet Lammy, and Marie Clark.
Do you have, do you, can you provide very, excuse me, through the chair, can you provide very brief instructions on how they do that so they could, they could do it now?
They're not by telephone. They're actually, they should, I hope, see an option. Yep, there's one hand that goes up for June.
Okay, okay.
And Janet.
One second. I'm just gonna bump June up for a second. Oh, that was Janet. All right, well, bumped Janet up. Janet, did you have your hand up in the air?
I was just showing you I knew how to do it.
Yep.
I think June was doing the same thing.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It worked.
You're going back into the audience, okay. And, hold on, let's see, Marie Clark has her hand up. Hold on, please.
Marie, did you have a question?
No, it's me. It's Ken.
Oh. Should've known.
Just listening.
Back to the peanut gallery, okay. You look cute, Chief Clark, okay.
Thank you. I do my best, yeah.
Back to the audience, goodbye. We actually have a lady. Is not the lady at the Hilton, are the same name?
Anne Marie, yeah. I think, believe it, yeah.
Okay, we have no other hands, you're good.
All right. And so with no public comment, we'll move on to, I guess, the 7/10 monthly report from Police Chief Galvin.
Excellent. So another interesting month for April, dealing with the effects of COVID and kind of the changes we've been dealing with and things. One thing that I found very interesting, and I was actually very impressed, and I think it shows what our officers are doing, is, you know, generally you see my reports and there's, you know, 750, 850 incidents that we log per month. This month, we logged 1,146. And this isn't to try and pad the stats or show fake numbers, but we're doing different things. And, you know, the officers aren't out stopping cars or engaging people that way as much anymore. But we have a lot of unoccupied businesses loaded with stock. And we've seen across the country that they've become targets. And the officers are doing a great job. They're out there checking those. It used to kind of be a thing that was relegated to the overnight shifts, but they would check the businesses while they were closed. It's now being done on all three shifts. And one thing that's important for us is that they're logging these checks, is it tracks times so that if something does happen, as unfortunately did happen at the golf center down on South Street when someone broke in this month, that we're able to go back and it gives us a timeline of when these things occurred. So that now, as we go back to other businesses during the investigation, and we're looking at cameras and looking at other things, it simplifies the process for our investigative needs. But some of the feedback we've also gotten, which is interesting, I had a discussion with Officer Goulding the other day, and he's been getting a lot of feedback from the community that people are noticing us more in the neighborhoods. It's really not a difference. It's just the fact that the people are home, so they're now, they're seeing us, they're seeing us pass through the neighborhoods. There's several offices that make a, you know, point to drive up and down as many, if not all, of the roads every shift, so they are seen and they are about. And it's, I'm just glad that the public is noticing that, it can see that, and that the officers are out there. You know, we have definitely slowed down, as I said, with motor vehicle stops. We still have made a few. You know, for us, 14 is just about nothing. But I also found it interesting, I was listening to WBC radio the other day, and they made a comment about the state police writing 100 speeding tickets in a week. That's like half an hour normally for the state police, and they made it sound like it was a big deal. But it really was a whole lot of, you know, not a lot of enforcement. But we're out there really trying to focus on things that are really creating a danger for others that are out there. You know, the registry of motor vehicles in the state has really told us, some of those minor traffic things and paperwork type violations and things, they've said, "Don't worry about those things now. We don't want to risk exposure to enforce things that we can get back to once we're back to somewhat of a normal type of a situation." So other things, when I did say we did have one break-in, unfortunately, the golf center, the driving range on South Street at some point, looks like during the day, actually, they broke a window on the side and the back door, which is actually the main door to the business, but completely guarded from the street, you can't see it. Doesn't look like much was taken. Still trying to figure out, it's an interesting case because, you know, not a place that hadn't been open, so there wouldn't have been a lot of cash, or, and if you've been there, Bob, the owner, who unfortunately, we learned, has also passed away, didn't keep a lot of high-value things there. It was, you know, just his driving range and the equipment that he needed for the driving range. So with COVID, we did experience a little bit of a scare this month with some possible exposures. Chief Clark went through the process as well, and he had actually several more staff members than we had to have tested, but our two staff members that were tested did test negative. You know, really did kind of breathe a sigh of relief after that. But one thing that happened is, as we learned of all this exposure on a weekend, I was able to quickly contact Dave Smith. Dave was able to touch with the school department, and we were able to get their electrostatic backpack sprayer. Uh-oh, I'm getting a warning that my internet connection's unstable, so I hope I'm okay. But we borrowed their backpack sprayer and, okay, and I was able to disinfect the entire police department, the fire department, all of our vehicles, and even the common areas in the town office building. So we were able to get quite a bit done just in a few hours using that hydrostatic sprayer that the school department has. So that's something that we may want to look at for the future to try and get for the town to have, so that we don't necessarily have to get it from the, you know, Chief Clark, actually, and I had a discussion today, he's working on an AFG grant for PPE equipment, and we're curious, I asked if that might be a possibility of something to get. You know, when we look at disinfectant and what we've been able to do, we've been very lucky with some of our community partners. Lowe's was phenomenal to us. They donated Lysol spray and bottles of bleach, some of that I've distributed upstairs to the offices that were open. And we were able to get some of the bleach to the highway garage, and the fire department has it for disinfecting the ambulances, and we have a small stockpile of that now. Also, we've been very lucky with Market Basket, and we kind of have a hotline to the general manager there. So if there's something we need, it's a quick call to him, and, you know, he's fortunate that he'll put something aside so that we have it if we need to disinfect police cars or fire engines or whatever it is. But we've also been lucky that the Mima stockpile has kind of grown. Chief Clark was able to get us some wipes just the other day from Mima. We had an issue, and I'm sure you saw it all over the news, that they gave out masks for every first responder in the Commonwealth, five masks per first responder. So we picked those up, we got them back, then they did some testing, and unfortunately, the ones that we were given came with the lowest rating of all the testing. So Chief Clark was able to go and they restocked the entire department or the town. So we got new ones. We were able to keep the old ones, which we still use as the equivalent of like the surgical masks or the cloth masks that people are wearing, but we were able to get additional KN95s for our staff. So that was something good that Mima was able to do for us. They put in my report, it was also somewhat of a slow month for animal calls. I spoke with Helen on the phone the other day. I haven't gotten a written report from her. Generally, she does her reports at her daughter's house, and with everything going on with COVID, she's not, she's still working her full-time position at the post office and isn't able to get oversee her daughter and the kids as often through this. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be some time probably before getting a written report. But I was able to talk to her, things have been going well for her. She, I didn't put it in here, she had an interesting incident with a cat that had gone missing. She was helping, it was actually a homeless person that happened to be coming through town and lost a cat, and she was able to work with him. She set up a trap at the golf station at Burke, and, you know, along with catching a possum, a skunk, and several other things, she was able to actually retrieve the cat and return the cat after, it was five or seven days for the person. So it worked out very well. We had another case that we thought we had a cat that may have been shot by somebody. I think it was really a misinterpretation by the person that found it. It ended up being reported third party several days later, and we worked with the MSPCA on that. One thing I didn't put in my report that I wanted to mention, I started to track the, with the new hybrid cruiser that we have in place, the fuel usage. And, you know, obviously, a lot of our time has been spent idling in our cars. Generally, we average 11 to 12 miles per gallon, not great. But we've seen a pretty significant increase, and we're up to about 18 miles per gallon with the new cruiser. So we should see about, you know, calculating what we're paying for fuel now, about a $2,200 savings per year on that. You know, the car was $3,500, $4,000 more than the base gas model that we would have purchased. So over the five-year life of the car, $10,000 or $11,000 will be a significant savings in fuel. So that's a good thing as we move towards future hybrids within the fleet. So the last thing I wanted to talk about, it's kind of been a little bit of an exciting development as the month went on, our radio system and potential funding for it. So just to kind of give you a little background on where I've been with radios, it's something we have not had on our capital plan and really had not been looking at any town expenditures for. What happened is, is we started to look at the regional dispatch. That was one of the initial conversations we had. And I should say that we're very lucky with what we have for a radio system. It still functions. It is absolutely integrated in old technology. But when it was put in, it was put in and able to be done at a reduced cost to the town. A gentleman by the name of Rick Plummer, who used to be a member of the fire department, he was on, I believe, the public safety building committee, he did a lot of things. And, you know, smarter than I could ever hope to be, very tech savvy, and he was able actually to design and build out the system for the town. So when it initially went in, there was a significant savings. And Rick has been great and frequently reaches out to me as we needed help with the system. Because Rick didn't do it to the standard that maybe the radio company would have done, he did it to an incredible standard, but some of the techs weren't familiar with the products he used and the way he used it. But as we move forward, we've had some breakdowns, we've had some issues, and we started to look at regional dispatch. So one of the initial conversations I had when we were going into regional dispatch was about our radio system. And one of the things that was told is that we would be able to apply for a grant and to upgrade the system. The way it was working is we were second. So we were going in around the same time as Bolton, but Bolton was going in first. And so they applied for a grant through the center, and Bolton was awarded $271,000 to upgrade what they had for a radio system. I know you're aware of the issues we had with the center and management of the center for a time. And I think a combination of that and the radio company they used, they designed a system that wasn't feasible to install in the town of Bolton. They had not secured tower space. There were several things that ran into issues. So this system that should have been installed three years ago is still pushed out to today and finally being installed now. But what happened during that timeframe is, first, the grants changed, so we weren't able to apply for radios anymore. And even if we were, because we hadn't spent the money we already had allocated for the center, they wouldn't award us any additional funding. And then the vision also started to change, and we started to look at a larger-scale project as a regional radio system. Unfortunately, and I know, Chris, you've been involved and heard some of these talks during Ross's reports and Margaret's as well, we've been turned down for funding on that as well. And as we start to move forward, it doesn't look like that's something that we can bank on anytime soon. So what we've been doing is that as this commercial construction and other things are happening still here in town, there was a change in the building code. And that building code requires the developers to install radio equipment in the buildings to allow our public safety radios to work while we're there. It becomes quite costly. So we've started some discussions with some of our community partners, and just at the end of last week, middle of last week, we were able to, and I say tentatively right now, secure a $350,000 donation towards the upgrade of our radio system. And this is something now that Margaret and I have talked over the last couple of days, and she's now in contact with the group to kind of nail down the legality of it, the language it need would need to go in for the donation. And it's kind of a win-win. It's a win for the town is that it provides a significant amount of funding to a complete upgrade to our radio system. But it also takes some of the burden off of the development, that the individual equipment won't have to go into each building. It will go on a tower site in the area that will then flood the signal to the area and allow us to have the same quality signal that we would get had the individual equipment been put in each building. So it really becomes a win-win. But the unfortunate part is that still leaves us with what could be about $100 to $150,000 shortfall if we wanted to complete the job. So, not done. Looking at some things at the end of last week, we found that the Community Compact IT Grants qualify for public safety radio systems. So as that hopefully is released in the late summer, early fall, the grant program, we could apply for that for the, to kind of bridge the gap or at least minimize what expenditures we may need to come forward with the town. Also, I've reached out to a couple of other community partners to see, because they could also benefit by this type of change in our system. And, you know, one of being the Highland Commons area. And one thing that we found is these systems, secondary systems, the BDA's as they're called, that go into the businesses, have not had to be installed in the Hudson portion of Highland Commons, because they have a nice radio tower right there on the giant water tank. And so I had some initial conversations with Tom Moses in Hudson about the possibility of us relocating our equipment on the water tank. And that may alleviate some of the pressure on Highland Commons and the new businesses that come into Highland Commons to install this equipment. So the hope would be that we could work with them as well as a partner to try and close the gap on the funding, with ultimately having no taxpayer dollars needed to be spent on this as we continue to move forward. But it's something I'll continue to keep you updated in. I hope that things go well with Margaret's discussions with our other partner and we're able to, you know, if the system comes in, and I have a company that's working on an estimate for us right now, but the rough estimate was, you know, $400,000 to $500,000. That, we'll see where that money comes in and continue to work towards it. What would be nice is that we are able to secure the $350,000. That would allow us to purchase some equipment initially that would allow us to kind of bridge the gap until we got to the new system. So there's a lot of positive things, you know, the fact that $350,000 is on the table for the town to utilize, it really is a positive. And, you know, we're excited and continue to look into it.
Could you say who made this donation?
I'm kind of gonna hold off right now until Margaret nails things down and we make it official, and then we'll put some more information out there.
Okay, I just thought I missed it.
No, I didn't say it. No, I kind of purposely left it out.
All right.
Through the chair, I'm, I'm, I want to say I'm fairly confident that, given the COVID-19 health crisis and the potential opening in the, I don't know when the IT grant program's gonna open up, it looks like it's going to be somewhere late summer. So I'm fairly confident that we might find a grant opportunity out there. And with $350,000 in hand, or even a portion of that, we have, you know, we have a lot of matching funds. So we'll definitely keep our eyes open for grant opportunities.
Right. And the plan as we move forward would be to create a matching system to Bolton, so that as we move forward at the district, it's the same equipment that's installed. And if we're able to come up with a regional system, we're already a portion of the way there. So I think as we apply for grants and the effect and the ability it has to benefit our regional partners, especially through the regional dispatch, I think that should open up additional grant opportunities as we move forward.
And keep, I mean, you might just keep asking about the grant through the region.
Oh, yeah. That's, I know as Ross works on the development grant for this year, that's one thing that he was working on was getting funding in there for a design project, to actually design a complete radio system for the district.
Yeah.
I'm also gonna reach out to CMRPC, because I'd like them to keep their eyes open too, because they are aware of a lot of different grant opportunities.
Yeah. And I also spoke with representatives from Senator Hand's office, and, you know, I don't know where things are kind of in flux with Rep. Notton right now, and where we'll be there, but I'll reach out to his office again as well. And, you know, we had talked about radios quite a while ago, and I know we talked at the admin board meeting about maybe getting some of our local politicians, you know, involved in the discussion as we look for funding for a radio system at district-wide.
Okay. Peg or Lisa, do you have any questions for Tom?
No, I'll wait. I mean, it's kind of silly asking questions when there's still a big unknown, so I'll wait.
Yeah. I think there's a lot of positives right now, but still some unknowns. And, you know, hopefully, we can come up with a way that there's all positives and we're able to win and install a new system and not, you know, especially with the financial times we may be entering, that we're not hurting, you know, hurting the residential taxpayer.
Okay. Appreciate all you do.
Well, thank you. It's been a good month, and we'll keep moving forward.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we've got a 7:20 appointment with John Amy from the Conservation Commission. Johnny, you there?
I'm right here.
Okay. You wanted to talk to us about the property acquisition proposal?
Yes. So this is in part a follow-up on the executive session that was held in February. Enough information, oh, I'm sorry. First of all, thank you for inviting me to join the meeting. Anyway, so enough information is known to the public at this point, that moving at least partially to an open session seems to make sense. I am going to be a little quiet about some of the numbers, the dollar amounts involved. But other than that, I think it's, there's a lot of people that already know that that land is potentially going to be transferred from the current owners to somebody else. After that executive session, Ashley, you know, drew up a memorandum for the Sudbury Valley Trustees Board around their assisting the town of Berlin in purchasing the property, property being the Laura property. It's about 100 acres consisting of three tax parcels, a 56 and 1/2 acre parcel, a 36 and 1/2 acre parcel, and a 7 and 1/4 acre parcel. The Sudbury Valley Trustees has helped Berlin and has helped other towns with the purchase of land, sort of as a go-between between the seller and the town, because the towns take longer to sort of manage this kind of acquisition, you know, the money transfer, and SPT can help facilitate the process. They helped us with the Wendler purchase, which, you know, that we now, the town now owns that property. This would be for a larger amount of money, and so it's usually, it's for a amount of money that's usually beyond the scale that they step into. So that, you know, that's why Ashley was, really wanted to make a special presentation to the board. The board did agree, and from that, the SPT generated an offer letter to the Laura family, but there were a couple of contingencies in the offer letter. There was a contingency about that the town would approve a purchase through a vote at an all-town meeting. And there was a contingency about selling a couple of lots off as a way of knocking down the overall cost. So, but the letter was sent out, but then on the 27th, the representative from the Laura family emailed Ashley that they were not interested in the offer as it was presented. Ashley, particularly because of some of the uncertainties around the contingencies, sort of like, well, this has to happen, that, this has to happen, and, you know, they were worried that it would result in either the deal falling through or endless delays. Ashley emailed the representative back immediately, and then alerted us. And we started to strategize about other ways that we could put a deal together. And, you know, so some of the ideas that she's come up with is, and she's formed this through a letter, which she has yet to send, because she wanted to make sure that I had a chance to present to the Board of Select. The first would be sort of a phased sale, that, you know, to, the phases would be, phase one would be the sale of two frontage lots. And if, I have a map I can share if you want to see, if anybody, the Select Board is in the market or interested in seeing where these lots are. Is that something you would like to see?
Through the chair, would the board like to, he could share the screen? Would the board like to see that?
Up to Peg and Lisa. I don't know whether it's important at this point or not.
Probably not.
Okay. Peg?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. So phase one would be the sale of two lots, and that would, you know, SPT would work to help with the engineering for that, to get those lots sold, and that would allow a significant portion, a significant amount of money to be transferred to the Laurers right up front. You know, so that that would alleviate some of their concerns about delays in, in selling the entire property. I should have, you know, of note, the person that bought this property, Mr. Laura, who bought it many years ago, he's passed away. His sole heir is his wife, who's in her 90s. So her children are now trying to, you know, tidy up some of these things and try to sell off some of the assets, you know, now rather than later. That's what sort of precipitated all this action, because Mr. Laura had been sitting on this land for quite some time. Sitting on it so long that it, you know, a lot of people assumed that it was already town land, because, you know, the community accesses the land so often. Anyway, so phase one would be the sale of two frontage lots. Phase two would be the sale from the Laurers to SPT and/or the town directly of two other lots that are a little less valued. One is actually across the street. It's a lot, it's sort of over on the other side of the aqueduct, and it's a lot of wetlands there. It's kind of swampy. And the other lot, which is larger, and that's the one that's about 36 and 1/2 acres, is quite steep. And the other lot, which is larger, and that's the one that's about 36 and a half acres, is quite steep with other periods of areas of wetland in a, you know, stream. So it's, you know, much more hard to develop. And they were willing to sort of sell that off at a bargain price. So those would be two chunks. And then the final sale would occur after a town meeting vote. The, so that was one option that Ashley was going to present to them, sort of a phased sale. The second option that Ashley was going to present to them was that we, the town and SVT would actually purchase an option to buy the entire thing. You know, in other words, what we would do is we would actually give them money to, you know, as a way, as a way of sitting on, so, you know, preventing them from selling the land for a certain amount of time, say nine months, you know, so that we could sort of get all our ducks in order and then purchase it all, all at once later on. The, that option money would be non-refundable. It would allow them, if we pulled out, to use that money to sort of market the land and stuff like that. That, that's, that's the general theory behind an option to purchase. Of course, you know, the, the next scenario would be that we still have a right of first refusal. We'd have to write a first offer on that land. But of course, that would mean a major scramble with difficulty, you know, raising those kind of funds in short. Anyway, so the, a lot of this sort of, a lot of this falls on our having a town meeting vote. And it's apparently impossible to have it in the June meeting. But then therefore scheduling a town, a fall meeting so that we could, you know, move this vote forward. There had been discussion previously about, you know, other, you know, free cash monies and stuff like that. And I know that now the town and state are under tremendous fiscal stress because of the epidemic. But it's still not, potentially not like tons of money. If you knock off those two lots and you use up the conservation fund, which, the open space fund, which, you know, the commission would be willing to use all what we have at this point towards this property. And you assume that we will get a land grant, then the remainder isn't that hefty. Again, I don't, I prefer not to talk about specific numbers right now, but it's not that hefty. A land grant is a, you know, it's been a program with the state for quite some time, local acquisition for that diversity. We've, I think we've made, the town's made use of it before. We applied for one for the Wendler property and got turned down. But according to Ashley, this would be a pretty sure thing, as sure as things get with the state. Because, you know, the state has already identified this as a high priority land. And it clicks off a lot of the boxes as far as access and nature and species and, you know, joining lands. Because it's already, you know, it's already joins land, you know, for instance, the recent Olberg CR and, you know, joins another CR and stuff like that. So it takes off a lot of boxes that the state would be interested in, in assisting a town like Berlin with a land grant. So it's, a land grant is a situation where we would, you know, set up, you put up the funny, the money, and then they would reimburse a certain percentage. And it knocks off the total costs considered. Anyway, so what I'm hopeful of is that the select board will certainly, you know, agree that this is an important project, that we should hold a town meeting, hold it, you know, hopefully not in the too distant future, and, you know, put up for vote that the town will put up funds to help purchase the Laura property. By one means or, one means or another. There will need to be a second discussion probably about how we do this after, or Margaret has had some more time to sort out, you know, what the budget looks like.
I agree. I think that we do need some time to figure out the plan finances for FY '21. And I would assume that keeping the information that you gave us in mind, if things look good, we would, you know, consider putting an article on the warrant at a special town meeting later this year.
Is there any possibility I could get a, like a firmer commitment that there will be a town meeting and we will put forward a warrant?
Margaret, I, I don't know what you're thinking as far as the foreseeable future, if things turn around and things are going well. And that would be, I assume, one of the reasons to have a special town meeting. Am I right?
Yes. Yes, that is right. We, we don't have a crystal ball. Right now, we're looking at just trying to sustain town operations. We have about, we have, currently, we have about $2.2 million in cash reserves. However, with the COVID-19 crisis, the state has made provisions to allow some of those cash reserves to be used to fund, to fund public services should the town fail to adopt a budget by June 30th. So that's kind of unprecedented in and of itself, that free cash would be allowed to be carried from the end of the fiscal year into the new fiscal year in order to sustain budget costs. You know, I've recommended before, and I've said before, I've tried to reiterate that as, as we move forward, we may find ourselves in a position to be able to potentially consider this at a special town meeting later this year, assuming we have clarity with regard to available funding. You know, not to bring in all kinds of other subjects. This is an important land acquisition. I understand. And I'd like to try to facilitate that. But at this moment in time, it's, it's extremely, extremely difficult to be able to, to attempt to make a recommendation to spend large sums of money when we just don't know what, what the immediate future is going to hold as far as town revenues.
I think time will tell.
Would it be helpful to gauge interest at the June meeting? Have someone from Conservation talk about the project and just get a, a general sense of the town's commitment to this?
It could go either way, I think. It could be favorite, I mean, it could be a good way to gauge. Or it just depends on who's there.
Here's all, we're also going to be, and I'll, I'll defer to the board on this, obviously. But we're also going to be having the pre-town meeting and budget forum on June 4th. Maybe there's a little segment there. And also Coffee Talk's going to be held on June 11th. That might be another opportunity. So there are a couple of, a couple of possible opportunities for community discussion on this. So.
Yeah. It just might be helpful to start getting the discussion out there and, and gauging support. I think there's going to be support for this because this, this is a significant property. So perhaps, you know, that also shows sort of if there's goodwill in the town towards the project that may help with the discussions with the family who's selling it.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I think there would be support, and I also believe there would be distress if this was developed.
Agreed.
If, if, if this, if this 100-acre parcel was sold to a developer and they chopped it up as much as possible to put in as many houses as possible, I think there would be a tremendous amount of distress and potentially anger that we hadn't done more to try to preserve this land. People already assume that this is conserved land. The, it's, it's used as if it's conservation land. And it is frequently used. And it's a very popular place to go.
It's probably one of the most popular in town.
Yes. That, Forty Caves is pretty popular too. But, you know, I, that, that also gets access more from, from other people like in Clinton and stuff like that. The, it's, it is a very popular place for, for our residents. And it's, you know, it would be, I think it'd cause a lot of distress to watch that area be completely developed.
Do you, John, do you think that you would be interested in doing a presentation of some kind?
Of course, of course.
To it at Coffee Talk or?
Absolutely. Myself and, and, and the other members of the commissions. I mean, I, everybody, you know, Walter will talk forever. So I'll talk more succinctly. But the, I, I, my concern is that, you know, I, I don't need, neither Ashley nor, or I know what the family dynamics of the Lauras are at this point. I, you know, I, I don't know exactly how flighty they are about this.
John, excuse me. John, can I ask a question through the chair? Has that, has, has that changed on that end? Has that changed since you met with the board in executive session? The dynamics? Okay.
Well, no, I don't know what the dynamics are.
Okay.
I know the messages changed, you know. But, you know, before, you know, for, for quite some time, they were quite sleepy about it. And then they expressed some interest and stuff like that. And all of a sudden, they, there, there was, you know, an email of April 27th that was queasing us. You know, it was like, you know, this is all too complicated. We don't want to deal with this. We'll just go, you know. Talk to, you know, sell it off, you know. I don't, but again, I, it's hard to know. I don't know these people, you know, they, none of them live in Berlin. Although some live in Massachusetts. You know, and I don't, I don't know how much pressure there is to generate cash versus just to, you know, sort of bring closure to someone who says, I just don't know. But I, I think the, if, if the select board can say, yes, you know, it's our intention to hold a town meeting in the fall where we will bring this to a vote, you know, and with the caveat that there's still a lot of uncertain fiscal situations. But at least if they could, if I could get you guys to just agree somehow to say, yes, we will, you know, put this in the minutes, that we will have a town meeting and entertain this, this, you know, this, the purchase of this property. And that would help Ashley with the negotiations around some of these other things. These phased sale or these, you know, purchasing an option and stuff like that. I mean, it would, if, you know, I think my understanding from the emails I read is that they're just worried that they're going to say that, you know, the town's just going to like flake out and not do anything. And then they'll be a year later and they still haven't sold the property.
I think it needs to be explained to them that the situation financially for towns right now and that they
But they may not care.
You know, they may, right? They may not care. But I think that, I don't know, they probably don't know Berlin. But I think when people decide that they would like a piece of land like that, then I think that knowing Berlin is important to say that, you know, we are going to move forward with it. So Peg, did you have a question?
Questions and comments. So I think probably with the exception of John, I am obviously most concerned about the land that literally I look out windows at my house and I see it. Going back to Margaret's point, I think now more than ever, we need to be fiscally responsible towards the town. Would I hate seeing that property be developed in ways that you can't imagine? I grew up on horseshoe pond skating over there, so I would hate to lose it. As much of a distress it would be to the town to lose that property, I think it would be more of a distress for everyone to be like, yeah, let's buy it. And all of a sudden, they open up their tax bills a year from now and it's increased greatly. And I know that you really can't talk cost, but cost has to be discussed at some point. You just can't sell the idea of buying the old McGrail property to say Berlin thinks that they already have it. People ride it, people walk it, people skate it, it's on it. You know, without saying, yes, we can buy it. But do you realize that's insert number of, of money here that's coming out of free cash? When you take it out of free cash, it impacts XXX. Because we can't take it out or we're looking for a grant, your cat, your taxes are going to go up by XXX in the following years. That needs to be explained to the people in town. You just can't go on heartstring of the old McGrail property is beautiful, it abuts great land, there's tons of wildlife back there, I've seen it, I've been on it. This needs to be fully explained besides just gaining interest. But right now, our main responsibility should be towards the town, keeping it going, making sure that there's no impacts on our day-to-day operation. As I said, do I want to see the McGrail property gone? Absolutely not. Do I want to see my taxes go through the roof because we can't do free cash, because we can't get a grant? Absolutely not. There needs to be a happy medium. But whatever message needs to go out, John, that needs to be in there. And so you've got to, you've got to balance it with this is great land, but this is also great cost. And this is the impact to it. There's going to be more distress when the tax bills go up to buy this land than there'll be distress in losing the land.
I, I almost, I actually disagree with that. I think that, you know, you really need to look at this in the long term. You know, that if the tax bills were to go up one or two years because of this, because we had to, you know, borrow money or that sort of thing, I think that's a lot different than the fact that you cannot undevelop that land once it's gone.
Well, I think that what we're going to have to do is give it some time. And perhaps the next time that we discuss this can be at Coffee Talk. Or given a little bit more time, we might be able to discuss this more specifically in executive session also.
Happy to do that. Margaret? If I may, so do you have any sense of when there'll be a clear direction? For instance, about how much free cash is left?
I think by the time, our town meeting is on June 22nd. That said, state budget projections are changing every other week. I don't expect that numbers that we have now are necessarily going to hold even until town meeting. So I think that we're going to see some additional revenue declines. But I, I, if, if the board is supportive of having a community conversation about this, I, I couldn't agree more. I think it's really important that the townspeople discuss this, the benefits of it. And, you know, and even, you know, if there are any negatives, even any negatives. But right now, we have to think outside the box about everything. So we do need to talk about this some more. We need to put all options on the table. And we also need to not sacrifice essential town services when we're, when we're looking at new initiatives, any new initiatives. So I think, I think having this community conversation is going to go a long way to guiding the board and the town with, with what to do.
I agree.
Peg, if I may? If things do go right, which is that they sell two, two lots for, for a good price, we use what's left of the open space fund and we get the land grant, people really wouldn't notice a big hit to their taxes. Even if, if it was borrowed and then if we're truly lucky, it wouldn't make that much of a blip in the open, in free cash money.
Jonathan?
You can't talk about the numbers, but you all saw them.
Yeah, we did. I still think that though, we need to see what direction things are going to go in the next couple of months. That would help guide us.
I agree. I mean, when we had that discussion, we weren't in this COVID mess. You know, people weren't losing their jobs. People losing their jobs. People weren't wondering how they were going to put food on the table. And I know that you're going to say, oh, stop being dramatic, blah, blah, blah. But you know what? That's reality. And I think as the voted, you know, people to help run this town, that we need to do our responsibility. Do I want the land? Yeah. If I had the land, would I buy it? In a heartbeat. But you know what? I I don't. And I, you know, to second, Margaret, do we need a community outreach? Yeah, but we need to give an entire community outreach. And even though, John, you say well, taxes may only go up a blip. Well, you know, a blip to some people truly is a blip. A blip to other people is not a blip. So I think that we need to look at the town as a whole and not just say, oh, it's only going to go up 2%, 3% because 2%, 3% may truly push someone over the edge.
No, I I wouldn't want that either, obviously. And maybe I shouldn't have used the word blip. I mean, you know, based on some scenarios, it wouldn't go up at all. There would be no increase in taxes. So I think that's a very reasonable scenario. You know, maybe after the budget's drawn up in June, it'd be you could just lay the numbers right out. But I I don't, I mean, I think this can be done without increasing taxes at all.
It possibly could be. But the date of our Coffee Talk, Margaret?
June 11.
June 11.
What day of the week is that?
That's a Thursday.
What time is that?
Seven.
Okay, I'll be home by then.
Okay. Do we agree that that should be the next step?
Well, you're not asking me anymore.
I'm asking the board, I guess. I'm sorry.
Well, you're looking at me anyway. Anyway. I anything firmer than that would help Ashley with her negotiations, you know.
And I I just would caution that you really, really need to think long term on this and not short term, because this is a short term issue that we're having.
You know, we didn't, we didn't talk much about this, and I almost hesitate to to bring it up, but I'm trying to think outside the box here. The possibility of a debt exclusion to purchase the land, present it to voters as a debt exclusion, so it's completely off the budget, it's not tapping into our cash reserves. And it's it's additional funding that taxpayers would absorb. But just something else to think about as we think about various ways we could possibly make this happen.
And you might be able to get a feel for that when you do a presentation to the town.
I don't know what a debt exclusion is.
A debt exclusion is a lot that allows borrowing off of the off of the tax levy. So it's an amount that's borrowed over and above taxation that's then put on to the taxpayers. So the taxpayers, it goes to a ballot vote. And taxpayers would have to approve being taxed above the tax levy. Or they call it outside of the tax levy.
Yeah, that that's exactly the scenario that Peg was talking about us avoiding.
Well, I think that's I I'm getting the feeling that this is the best we can do for right now. But please, you know, stay in touch. Let us know if there's any new developments.
Well, I certainly will. And again, I'm grateful for allowing me to speak. But I am fearful. And I I just not really sure how this is going to play out.
I mean, John, know that I support you. I sit out in my front yard and I look at the trees and I watch the grosbecks and everything else that flies through that area. And I think about it being developed and my heart breaks. But at the same time, too, my heart breaks more if any of this needs to get passed on to the people in town, regardless if it's short term or long term. That's where our focus needs to be. So as I said, I'm behind you. I played on that land as a little kid. And if I could do it now without, you know, causing serious damage, I would. But you know, I I can't fathom or agree to any sort of outlay of cash at this moment, not knowing what's going to come into the town and what we need to keep the town running.
Hey.
I I agree. I mean, there's two points there. You know, one is keeping the town running. And the other is increasing the taxes. I I did not have not yet gotten a sense based on what I've heard that we're at risk of not keeping the town. Now, that may change because you never know with these things, but you know, I I think that's an important distinction that, you know, you know, if we could determine that we have enough cash to keep the town running, then, you know, it might be more feasible to do this, but I don't know. I'm not a fiscal person.
I need it. I think we just need time to see whether we can keep the town running the way the way things are going right now and hope for the best. And I think just a little bit more time will will have a little bit better idea, too.
Thank you. And if I may, Margaret, do you have a time, like a specific date?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
You have a date when you'll have a better idea?
A date when we'll have a better idea.
If you do, then I want the lottery numbers for
Our intent is to go to town meeting with a budget. The question is whether that budget's going to stick or not. So that I, yeah, I I can't. I I don't. I don't know. The news that is coming from the state just gets worse and worse.
You're not pulling any tax revenue, right?
Yeah, well, it's it's tax revenue, states losing money on licenses and permits, and then we are heavily reliant on a commercial tax base here. And there's plenty of risk in that as well. It's it's a it's just a tough call at the moment. We might, as far as as far as tax revenues, local property tax revenues, the board did vote a couple of weeks ago to extend the property tax deadline to June 1. So on June 1, at least, we'd have some idea as to what the tax collection rate was. And whether, you know, well, what the tax collection rate was. We're hoping for the best there.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
It's John.
Thank you, John.
I'm grateful that I had a chance to speak. Bye, I'll sign off.
Thank you, John.
Okay. All right. The next thing on our agenda would be the Town Administrator Report.
First, I want to say, you know, in the background, I'll continue to do my best. And I know June will too. We are monitoring revenues every day, watching our our cash reserves and the role they may have to play in the future in stabilizing the town's finances. And we'll do everything we can because we know that that land acquisition is an important goal for many people in town.
Please remember that, you know, Community Preservation Act was set up with this sort of thing in mind. And, you know, that money is going to be available.
Yep. All right. So the first thing, this isn't part of my printed town report, but I just want to report on the board's letter that was sent to Maloney Properties for Northbrook Village last week. The Vice President of Maloney Properties, Jim Regis, has replied that he takes the board's concerns or that they take the board's concerns very seriously. They anticipate being able to issue a response to the board in greater detail. They say by by tomorrow, by Tuesday. And then they're also requesting an extension of the deadline to provide the level of detail the board has requested. So my hope and expectation is that we will have some sort of response from Maloney Properties tomorrow. They claim, he claims that they are working very hard on the issue of the residents that have been displaced because of the water damage. And they also have been in close contact for a long time with the Board of Health and DEP on the potable water drinking issues at at Northbrook Village. So between Mary and I, we will watch very carefully to see what kind of responses we get on that. On to COVID-19, the usual. The governor issued a an order requiring the use of face coverings in all public places when social distancing is not possible. He issued this order on Friday. We have posted signs at our town buildings. And there's a lot of discussion among police departments across the state regarding enforcement. And I I've advised Chief Galvin, at least for now, that from what I've seen in other jurisdictions, it blatant blatant disregard for orders and and jeopardizing others' health has been the impetus for enforcement in most cases. It's not, it's not a pro, you know, it's not a going out there and waiting to enforce. It's it's seeing if there really are some serious issues being posed by people who are who are defiant of the orders. So we're going to stay on that. And all right, so FY21 wage adjustments. Tonight, I've got about three dozen recommendations on expense lines revision on expense line revisions for the board. Next week, I am going to be making recommendations on wage FY21 wage lines, and those will be based on our current financial uncertainty. And with reference to the HRs, our HR studies, comp and class plan updates, because I think that the timing actually is good with the comp and class study that we could actually reference that and possibly address certain wages next year through those results. The next item is I'll I'll talk about this when we go through the FY21 budget lines. But just so the board knows and the public's aware that in making revisions to my former recommendations on these lines, I examined all current and prior years' actuals and contacted all the all affected departments last week prior to bringing these to you tonight. I know that there isn't 100% agreement from departments, but this is definitely, I think this is an example of of shared sacrifices. And I've reviewed everything from four years back to 10 years back on on all of these departments. So the next item is just a reminder that we'll have our pre-town meeting and FY21 Budget Forum on Thursday, June 4 at 7 o'clock. Looks at this point like we're still going to have it. It's going to have to be done virtually. And I'm going to develop a format for that meeting where everyone can can be involved, all of our local official stakeholders. We, this is good news. We had a delivery today of a new Council on Agent van. I've got a couple of pictures here to show you. And here's. Can you? Can you see that?
Indeed.
You see that van? That's that's what arrived today. Here's another picture. There's our own Bob Blair in his mask, and he was doing videos of the demonstration while they were showing it. Really is a nice, it really is a nice vehicle. So
Who is the woman coming out of the van?
She's the she's the person from the dealer, and she was doing the demonstrations on the van.
Hard to tell, masks on.
It is. Everyone's got masks. Hey, these voters are keepers for the future. So the van right now, it's going to be insured, registered, it's parked safely inside the highway barn right now, so protected from the elements. And hopefully soon, it'll be it'll be on the road and everyone will be able to get a firsthand glimpse of it. So I'm sharing the the screen now. And stop share. Okay. Next. Solar pilot negotiations. So we, our solar pilot team comprised of Lisa, Molly Reed, myself, and our solar consultant, Beth Greenblatt, met essentially by phone last week with the the Randall Road Solar Project developers. And we do have significant differences of opinion in the tax status of the project itself. And I think, and Lisa, if your if your understanding is any different, I appreciate hearing it. But it it seems to me that we are absolutely very close, if not at, an impasse on that. Lisa?
They have no interest in negotiating.
None, none. Yeah.
We are not at all on the same page. I I see no point in continuing these discussions because we are going to get nowhere. We have gotten nowhere in the past three discussions that we've had. And the last one was not good.
No, no. I think I think they've they've been equally as unproductive, in in my opinion. So so the town's understanding of the tax status of the parcel is that it is in fact taxable under the commercial personal property taxes. And we are going to follow Department of Revenue's guidelines for the taxation of that personal property. And the developers believe that the the project, all the personal property is tax exempt. And they, I believe, are are basing their their opinion on a prior solar projects that were deemed by the the ATB. They were deemed by the ATB to be exempt. But this situation is a little bit different. We have, we our consultant put together a lot of valuation data based on the limited information the project developers gave us, plus some information from from very similar solar projects about the same size megawatt DC, so like 6.8 megawatt DC systems. So we have a lot of that information that, thank goodness, we had a consultant working on this. Our assessors are going to be able to use that to be able to tax personal property. But I think the board needs to expect that in the very near future, the recommendation, my recommendation is going to be that we proceed with billing for personal property for these assets. And I think that's going to be we're not going to lose anything by doing that. We're going to base it on the valuation that's been established by the data we have. But it's not going to be through a pilot agreement. It's going to be through personal property taxation.
And there also is a pertinent piece of legislation that would affect their interpretation. So that may be something that we want to discuss, you know, requesting that our legislature support.
Yes. Yeah.
Peg?
So on the on the solar pilot, a couple of weeks ago, Walter had sent an email out to a bunch of us regarding all the silt runoff. And I think there was a meeting with Conservation a couple Saturdays ago. Do you have any idea either what happened at that meeting, what next steps are, and how it impacts this, if anything at all?
I don't have information from CONCOM's follow up. I do know that they were kind of headed toward doing another, they don't call it a notice of noncompliance, something issued by the Conservation Commission to impose penalties for that runoff. And I I don't know the the final outcome of that.
Okay, just curious.
I can, I can, I can follow up on it.
No, no need to. We was just curious if you knew, like, off the top of your head, where we where we are.
John left a little too early.
I know.
He could have, he could have answered that. He wasn't. All right. So the next thing under this is heating oil prices are incredibly low right now. I was looking on the NYMEX futures last week, and the January 2021 price was like $1.2. So not that we purchase from futures here, but I suggested that Dave, go ahead and get the three quotes for our heating oil now to see if any companies are actually willing to lock in because or in the near future, because that could be a significant savings in that budget line next year. And then finally, on this section, CMRPC is going to assist preparing the town's Green Communities Annual Report. And I think I think the Chair of the Energy Committee is relieved that CMRPC will be helping.
As long as he doesn't have to do it. He's cool. Yeah.
CMRPC is able to avail themselves of of direct green communities funding for technical assistance. So they are using their $1,500 to help us with our annual report. So that's, I thought that was So they are using their $1,500 to help us with our annual report. So that's, I thought that was really good. I spoke with the moderator today regarding the format for town meeting if social distancing is still in place. I've also gotten a lot of information from our, from other municipalities across the state. He is, at this point, he would like to try to set up the auditorium with chairs separated according to social distancing guidelines. I got some information from another community in Massachusetts today that they are preparing Ziploc bags that contain gloves and masks and are handing out Ziploc bags to everyone who checks in at town meeting to be sure that everyone is adequately protected. So we're starting to think about, about plans for the, for the setup of the, of town meeting. We are also preparing here to eventually reopen the town offices and other municipal buildings. Today, we were looking around to, to determine how we're going to be able to protect staff and the public by assuring social distancing guidelines when people come to offices. So we're working on a reopening plan here. I've requested an extension on our municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, although we are, we are going to be moving forward, doing virtual stakeholder workshops, and then moving into a community information session. And I am applying this week to renew the town's housing choice status as the two-year term is close to expiring. So I am going to be working on that tomorrow to get that renewal application in. And then the ADA Self-Assessment Project, the grant-funded project, is still in the works. Today, consultants were here walking through a few vacant, apparently vacant, town facilities to assess those. And we expect their, their site visits to wrap up this week. And finally, I have a couple of reminders from the town clerk. Town Clerk Eloise Salz reminds everyone that it's not too late to respond to the 2020 federal census. It can be done safely from home, either online or using the forms that were mailed to residences. And then also absentee ballots are available for the June 29th, 2020 annual town election. Go to the town's website for information and an absentee ballot application, or call the town clerk to request that application, that an application be. And that is it for my report for tonight.
All right. Thanks, Margaret.
You're welcome.
Lisa, Pen, do you have any questions for Margaret?
Yes, mine.
Okay. Then we'll move on to old business. The Town Administrator Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Recommendations.
Okay, let me pull up the, this spreadsheet. Can you all see the spreadsheet?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So we're just going to go down the list. It's about three, three dozen lines here that we've, that I've scrubbed and we've gone through to make some minor and some not so minor changes. First, I'll just go down the line. I don't recommend any change to the previously recommended town moderator expense line. This has been consistently spent to the appropriated amount or close to it over the past several years. And it's an extremely minimal amount, so I'm not recommending any change there. FENCOM expenses. Over the past 10 years, the Finance Committee has expended under the annual appropriated amount in the expense budget line with not more than $160 being spent in any given year. So I am recommending that the $275 be reduced to $175. Next one is accountant expenses. The accountant's expenses includes contract costs for Vadar financial software. It includes office supplies that are purchased for multiple departments and provided to those departments at no cost. And there's not a whole lot of room to move, to, to reduce in this line. The prior year's expenditures, the high in the prior 10 years has come close to the $9,300 that was previously recommended. So I'm only recommending a reduction of $300 currently in this accountant expense line. Assessor's expense line. Again, this, this line contains nondiscretionary costs for data collection software, maps, and other required costs. And therefore contains a number of fixed costs. FY21 is also going to be a revaluation year requiring additional expenditures, including travel to properties. However, based on prior year's expenditures, the budget has been expended to close to the $38,000, but not quite. So I am, I actually have made a mistake here. I am actually recommending a reduction of this to $30, $38,000, I believe. Let me just make sure that I've got that right. 38, 686. Yeah, that is, that is wrong. Level funding from FY20. Yeah, 38, 686. Okay, it is right. Getting all confused, too many columns. Yeah. So I had already reduced this to level fund at the FY20 level over here. And so I've just carried that. I'm not, I'm not recommending bumping that up for FY21. And next one, I'll try to move a little faster. It's going to take forever. Treasure collector expenses, going back 10 of the 10 prior fiscal years, not more than about $36,000 has been expended in those prior years. However, this amount contains the money that's been appropriated for the benefits consulting. And so I am recommending that only $300 be taken out of this in order to fund that consulting cost, along with all the software costs. Postage is also out of here and other fixed costs. Tax titles. There has been less tax title activity in the fewer years than what was appropriated for in the past 10 years, an average of about $4,500 has been expended in any given year. So I notified Dennis that my recommendation tonight would be to reduce this $10,000 down to $5,000 for next year. I should probably make note now that if additional funds are needed in any of these budget lines, there would have to be a reserve fund transfer request. The next one is the, is town clerk expenses. I am recommending no change from this other than to, well, to level fund this and add the $600 that was previously funded from the dog licensing revolving fund. So reducing the requested amount by $55 to level fund it and add the $600 now being raised or now being appropriated from the general fund. Conservation Commission, out of the prior, of the prior 10 years, the maximum amount spent in any given year was $1,946.50 in the past, that's been in the past few years. So I did, I am recommending that this be, this be reduced to the FY19 level of $2,000. Planning Board expenses, similarly, but a, but a bigger reduction. Planning Board, I received a response from the Chair saying, you know, that they like to, they like to try to keep funding in this line for unanticipated costs. I understand, I understand that. However, we, there's little room this year for, I'm not even going to say, let's see, little room this year for planning for unanticipated costs. We want to be sure we budget for the basic necessities. And in the past 10 years, they've spent no more than $738.25 in any given year. So I've reduced that to 1,000. Zoning Board of Appeals has spent as much as about $400, a little less than $400 in the past prior, in any of the past 10 years. And so I'm recommending a reduction of $100, bringing that down to 500. Town Report expenses. There was a request this year to increase the, increase the budget in FY21 to $6,500. I think in part because of the occupancy at River, at River Bridge. I am recommending that that be level funded at $5,000. These costs have, have significantly increased over the past few years. I'd like to see if we could possibly hold that steady now. Okay, police, police expenses. This reduction that I'm recommending reflects the elimination of a social media archiving service. Chief had already submitted, he had already submitted, or not, no, sorry. So the reduction here is $2,500. This brings it to above FY19, but below the current fiscal year. Fire EMS expenses. Everything that was included in the request to pay for additional advanced life support intercept costs, I am going to be recommending that a contingency line account be set up in this budget where monies for this, monies for potential unemployment costs, other possible payroll costs, veterans' benefits and things where we've, where we've already trimmed, that that money be included there outside of this expense line. That way, it does not have to be, it does not have to be bundled with other departmental expenses. It can be kept separate and monitored separately. So I am recommending a significant reduction in the, in his requested line, in his requested budget this year, expense budget. But keeping in mind that a lot of those funds are going to be shifted, or I'm going to recommend that they be shifted to a contingency line item.
Just curious, would that be less because they were all trying to sort of plan for this? And it was maybe coming true in some areas and others, or would it be the same amount?
Or ALS intercepts?
Well, no, just the bundling. I'm wondering if the bundled amount is, is less at the end of the day because they're all sort of contingency planning in their own little space. And sometimes that comes true and sometimes it doesn't.
It's possible. And in this particular case, where we're talking about a, a service, a fee for service, it's not, it's not something that we can really project well inside of a budget line. It's going to depend on the cause. So that's why I've made the recommended, recommendation to Chief. And I'm recommending it to the board now, and I will to FinCom, to move those additional anticipated costs out into a contingency.
No, I think it's really smart. Thank you.
Then we have building inspector expenses. I am, though, he, all right, so the building inspector had already reduced these costs prior to this. In looking back over the past several years, the amounts actually expended have been close to the appropriated amount. So I'm recommending, he actually took $2,000 more off of this last week when I contacted him. So I'm recommending that, that this be reduced to 26, 696, so a reduction from the current year's amount. The next one is plumbing and gas inspector. Both plumbing and gas and electrical inspector expense lines have been underspent over the past several years. Our building commissioner contacted both of these inspectors and, and came back with the recommended reductions to the inspector's expense lines. And, and I appreciate their willingness to, to reduce their lines. And the plumbing and gas inspector, that's, that's significant, significant reduction. Next one is animal inspector expenses. Animal inspector expenses. This is another line that has been, this, I was able to go back seven years on costs. And the, the greatest amount spent in any given year has been $83. Now, the reason, in any given year, $83. But the reason that I'm leaving the $500 here is because this would at least cover, you know, one incident of rabies testing on, on animals. So I wanted to at least leave that money in there to allow for one or two rabies tests to be conducted in the year if need be. Animal control officer expenses. So I went back 10 years, 10 years history, not more than $1,228.61 has been expended in any year between the fiscal years 2011 and 2020. This expense line covers the cost of food and care for animals that are picked up. It could potentially cover the cost of veterinary care if needed for an animal that's picked up. So I am recommending that the line be reduced, but only to $2,000 to allow for some of those potential costs. The next one, communication expenses. This is unchanged from the FY21 requested amount. These cost, the costs that are in this particular line are Nishoba Regional Dispatch District, radio system maintenance fees, the cost of these are nondiscretionary costs that are bundled in this line. And going back, these represent the actual cost for the contracts in FY21. So I'm recommending that this remain funded at the 213, 213 that was requested. The initial, the chief's initial request in this line actually was higher to begin with. And he came back with a reduced amount when Nishoba, when the Dispatch District's assessment, annual assessment came back a little lower.
Has the admin board actually thought about going back and looking at their budget?
We haven't discussed it yet. That's, that's possible. Similar, I think the school districts are going to be doing the same thing. So that is possible. We may be going back.
Okay.
Okay, highway expenses. See. This takes into account a combination of increased, increased supply costs, but decreased fuel and petroleum related costs. So the request was $148,100. While I don't believe that we can actually reduce to the current year's level because we have to account for some increased costs, I think that we can reduce it by 20, a little over $2,800 in FY21. So bring that, that requested amount down to 143, 920. That's a reduction of $4,180 from the requested FY21 amount. The next one is transfer station expenses. I am not going to move this. These are the anticipated expenses that are going to be incurred from the trash and recycling hauling contracts. This line is funded in part from, from transfer station or, yeah, transfer station offset receipts. In FY21, that'll be in the amount of $110,000 that will offset this particular line. So I'm not recommending any change from the requested amount there. Nor am I recommending any change for the cemetery expenses line. I believe that that can be funded at the requested amount. It's a slight decrease from FY20's amount. And that is because of the cost of electricity is going to be shifted to the town accounts from the cemetery expense line. Board of Health expenses. Oops, jumped ahead. The Board of Health expense budget has been, or it's been expended an average of a little over $600 in each, over in each, over each of the five prior years. And I am, and only less than $200 has been expended to date in this line. I'm looking at, while we possibly could have cut this line even further. I do expect that there are going to be some lingering COVID-19 related expenses the Board of Health is going to have to deal with in the coming year. So I'm recommending that this be reduced by $250, down to $1,200. Which is a reduction from the past few years. Nishoba Health and Nishoba Nursing are contracts that are actually, or their service agreements that are actually issued by Nishoba Health and Nishoba Nursing to their member communities. So it's like an assessment based billing system. These amounts reflect what the actual billing is going to be in FY 21. So I'm not recommending any change to those. I do think that in future years, it might be. It would be a good idea to take a look at, to take a look at these costs and the historic increases we've seen here. With COVID-19, they've had their work cut out for them and they've done all a lot to try to monitor our cases. Council on Aging expense line. So let's see if I can try to piece this one together for you. The, in prior, in prior years. There has been. There has been payments, or there have been payments made to individuals who have driven their private vehicles, who have driven passengers in their private vehicles. This is aside from the Meals on Wheels drivers. That practice ended this year. So there initially was a request to bump up the budget line to $13,270. But when we look at those those avoided costs that became effective this year when we stopped that practice and just use the van. We are able to level fund that at the FY 20 amount. Library, no, I'm sorry, veterans. I'm this veterans expense line. This has been spent a little less than the $260 this year. But this covers the basic costs of office supplies for the veterans agent, and I don't recommend any change in this line. The weed assessment, I'm not recommending any change to at this point. But like the, like the Nishoba services. I think that in future years, we could look at that to really do a cost benefit analysis of the services that are received from weed. I do know they've had an increase in usage recently with the fiscal crisis that has accompanied the the health crisis. Library expenses. The library is interesting because there are materials appropriation requirements and materials expenditure requirements. And if the line is disproportionately reduced to other budget lines, they risk losing their certification. They risk losing the library certification. So I took that into account when making, when making this recommendation not to level or not to increase the line slightly or to increase the FY 20 amount just a little more than than keeping it at level funding. A lot of this, this increase has to do with new costs. They've begun incurring for cable and internet at the library that they didn't previously have to pay for. So this absorbs, this increase will cover that cost. Recreation expenses. So there was an increase, there was an increase requested in this line for FY 21. There is a a set aside that's been noted in by by the Recreation Committee in the revolving fund to to help fund the Wellness Trails at South Commons. However, we really need to look at how that's done because that's not the intent or purpose of a revolving fund. A revolving fund should be paying for services that where the costs are derived from using the services. So if there is, so if someone is using the fields and making a payment to pay for fields, the amounts to maintain those services should be expended from the revolving fund. So based on that information, I am, I know this is difficult for the Recreation Committee too. But based on that information, I'm recommending that that line be level funded in FY 21 for now until we have more information. And then cultural council expenses, I'm just recommending level fund, funding that line that basically pays for three programs rather than four. I know that the Cultural Council wanted to increase their programming or the the small grants they're able to issue or award for programming. This would keep, this would keep the status quo of $1,500. Historical Commission, the Historical Commission has spent over the past 10 years approximately the amount that's been appropriated. And this number has not changed in quite a while. So I'm recommending that that remain level funded. Finally, Memorial Day expenses. There was a requested $100 increase in that line to buy additional flowers. And looking back in 10 of the past 10 years, not more than $1,900 has been expended in any fiscal year. So I'm recommending that that be level funded. The principal, I've already recommended to the board I did last week. I recommended the interest amount under under debt service. I wasn't quite ready to recommend the principal amount. And after going back and forth, part of me really, really would love to recommend paying off that ladder truck and getting it off the the tax levy this year. But when we talk about cash reserves, we may need to use some of that extra cash for some other important public, public services. So I have resigned myself to the fact that I will recommend a one-year pay down of the ladder truck. So this 307,794 reflects principal payments on the Highway Garage and the one-year principal balance on the ladder truck. Chapter 32B, health insurance. This was actually a correction I found. It was like a happy, a happy correction I found last week. I had actually carried this this higher number from FY 20 over to the level fund column. But the number this year is actually almost $40,000 less. So I reduced it to to match the amount that we're going to need in FY 21. So that brings the bottom line number. When adding all the amounts, all the wage lines that we have not factored into this particular column yet. When I look at everything that's over in the level fund column and we add the recommendations that I've made to date, it brings the bottom line budget number down to $14,132,105. And the level budget line again is 14,181,818. And if we go back over to this budget summary sheet, I have not plugged in the numbers from my recommended column. But you can see with the with the corrections in that column, we are, we currently have $126,552 in revenue surplus at the moment, based on the level fund scenario. That's it for tonight. Did I put everyone to sleep?
I'm telling you, you did an awful lot of work, research on on a lot of the budget line items.
That was, yeah, that was, I'm doing the same this week with the wage, with the wage lines a little bit differently. But we have to, we have to, we've got to scrub them all.
Yeah.
So I would ask for the board's support for all of the revised recommendations I've made tonight.
Does anyone approve?
I think I'm good. I mean, the only large one I saw, I think, was, you know, fire, which had like the largest increase, or was it like 30%, 31%?
See, we had, that's what it was. That's what it was. At this point, it's not. At this point, it's 3.6%, it would be 3.6% increase in the expense line with that change. But again, keeping in mind that that additional, the additional ALS costs would have to be kept in a contingency line elsewhere. So this reduces the 31.2% increase to 3.6 in that departmental expense line.
Guess what continues to boggle my mind is that truly without your due diligence and June and everybody else on that, you know, finance committee, and then when finance gets this on Wednesday to take a look at it, that it's so drastic that they, there was an increase, I mean, in pick any line, 31%, you know, 73%, even a point and a half. And you just go through and you're like, no, 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 no. And everyone seems to be okay with it. You know, fast forward a year from now, regardless if we're still in, you know, COVID-20 or if we're back to somewhat normal, I think we need to take this as a baseline and always use it to be like, you know what, just don't spend it because it's there. But you got to start treating town money like it's your personal, your personal checkbook and not just, I'm just going to ask for things bright and shiny and new all the time and see what I can get through. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Peggy. And also though, I also saw something different in doing this that there isn't a whole lot. I mean, it's little bits here and there, you know, the bigger, but it's, it's. But this comes from from scrubbing for prior years' actuals. It's like, wow. So the reality is that, you know, the money's been.
And we'll see how it goes, too.
I guess we will.
No, I appreciate it. And again, thank you. And that was really like my one question on that that stuck out in my head as you were going through. So I will second Lisa's nomination.
And and through the chair, I don't know if, I know June is out there somewhere. I don't know if she has anything else to weigh in on here since we're in like, we're in hourly contact here now. Does June have anything to to add?
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second on the table.
Hi.
Did you want to add anything to Margaret's spiel?
No, but I I just want to kind of reinforce what she just said as far as going through all these budgets and picking out the amounts over the last few years, what's been spent, what's needed. Oh, oh, some of the budgets, it's not really fat. There, there isn't a lot of fat in it. We're actually starting to dig into some meat or muscle. So there are going to see some hits on some of these budgets as far as some of the cuts that are being made. I just want to stress that, that a lot of it, you assume that it's just extra stuff that's not needed. And some of it is, it's just a matter of it's not going to happen next year. So just, I just want to reiterate that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, got a motion and a second on the table. I'll call for a vote. Keith, I.
First, Taki, I.
Stone, I.
Thank you all. And if that's all you have for us on that subject, Margaret, we can move on. Okay, the draft 2019 annual town report.
So there's been a lot of back and forth in emails. And I know that additional reports have been received. I know Mary sent out a, an email blast to various departments. And reports were coming in even today. I think we got one today. But the vast majority of reports have been, have been received. I was talking to Barry earlier today about the report. They are trying, they're trying to continue to move on it. They're being, they're being conscientious about the amount of white space on pages to try to conserve the, or to try to minimize the number of extra pages. And they are aware that the board's vote next week would be on to get the thing printed and distributed.
I actually, I actually spoke to Lori today and I spoke to the printer today. Lori worked a couple hours on it today and she was going to work some more on it. I do want to note, though, that she is currently caring for her grandson because her daughter had to go back to work as an essential worker in a hospital. So I think we need to be understanding of that. She is also working full time from home while trying to care for this child. So please take that into consideration. In addition, I also talked to the printer today. And he said that as long as we have this, his, he requested that he has 15 days to print after we have approved the proof. The proof takes maybe one or two days. So we don't actually have to have it done next week. It would be great if we do. But there is time here. In addition, I asked him also to quote, he's going to quote two for us. He's going to quote what it would cost if we have him put the addresses on the books. Given that you're already concerned about costs, I don't know whether that is something that we would pursue. But I did ask him to do that because there was interest in doing that.
Okay. I think we should probably still have this on the agenda for next week. And and we'll see how it goes. I know that Barry and Lori are working towards this and we'll see.
Maybe, Mary, excuse me, I'm going to ask Mary through the chair. Would it be possible for you to reach out to Lori to see if there's any way you might be able to help her in light of the fact that she's?
We don't have publisher. She does this. So it would be very difficult for somebody else to help her. I don't even think we have that in-house.
No. Thank you anyway.
So I guess we'll, we'll continue to look at what, what they have to update us at next week's meeting.
The other thing is, we, we don't even have a budget to get over to her until next week, do we? A budget?
The budget is, I expressed my concerns to Barry this morning about the, this particular year's budget. Where the budget likely, it goes in, the budget that goes into the annual town report will likely not accurately reflect the budget that ends up going to town meeting. To me, that creates, that could create confusion. But it was noted, you know, he noted that a notation could be put with a budget that it's subject to change.
But we haven't even tried to approve everything. Next week would be the last.
Next week would be the, next week, I hope to have my final recommendations to the board. But the Finance Committee hasn't, hasn't yet acted on any of these. So we'd have to at least wait for them to, to act on them. And then we'll continue to be scrubbing the revenue projections. Those might change too, which.
Is there anything else on this subject? Then we'll move on, we'll, we'll move on to the virtual community meeting notice for C3 Industries.
Finally, the CCC issued an administrative order last week. So as you know, the the proposed plan from this particular proponent has been, has been before the board and my recommendation to the board over the past several meetings has been, do not do anything until the CCC comes out with its administrative directives, order guidance, whatever it is you want to call it. And so they have, and their administrative order is very specific. But in addition to that, I have presented the board tonight recommendations on additional requirements that the proponent should meet. So wherever the administrative order provides certain guidance, I think that we need to make sure that the town is involved in, the town is involved in the testing of technology. So. in, the town is involved in the testing of technology. So if you look back at the proponent's prior plan, the proponent said, oh, they've done significant testing on their technology. However, it's before anything had come to the town. So I think that the town, if the board does approve moving forward with this on a contingent basis, first of all, I'd love a designee from the board if anyone wants to volunteer because tracking the 13 additional requirements that I'm recommending, in addition to what the CCC's administrator, administrative order prescribes, is going to take some, some close monitoring and working with the, the proponent. So I don't know if you want me to outline what I'm asking the board to, to require in addition to the CCC's, in addition to CCC's order, or if you've had time to review that and you think it's reasonable. Let me know.
My feeling was that if we were going to make an approval, we would make it contingent on all the requirements listed in your TA recommendation.
And that's what I'm asking. I'm making any kind of approval contingent on meeting those requirements. Yes.
So I can make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anything else? Any other comments, questions?
Is there any member of the board who would like to work with me and the proponent to assure that these are met?
And you volunteer?
This is, yeah, this is going to be a litany. It's going to have to be, meet this, meet this, meet this. So, okay.
And if you do, you know, if you do need any other help, I'm, I'm available also.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate that. Hopefully, we can start working with him, the proponent, on this right away. But the plan that he submitted is going to have to be changed dramatically. I think it's probably best that we provide him CCC's administrative order and then the board's additional requirements and have him come back to us with a draft plan. And see what he says. So maybe we could start with that. All right. Peg, I'll be in touch with you on this one.
So I, I made the motion. Lisa seconded it. We'll take a vote. Keith, aye?
I say aye.
Did you lose your, your audio, Peg? Okay.
Do a thumbs up.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So motion passes. And we can move on to the 2020 annual town meeting motions.
Okay. When I prepared the warrant, somehow I understood that motions were always included under articles on the warrant. I, so I included them. But regardless, I want to kind of, I want to just highlight a few of the motions. First of all, in Articles 1 through 4, which are the revotes from 2019, Town Council has advised that they could all be moved together and then voted together. I didn't have a chance to talk with the moderator about that, so I'll, I'll find out from him if that's something he'd be interested in doing. Jumping over to, I'm going to give, I'm, I'm preparing an actual motions sheet, which I think is going to be a lot easier to follow than, than going through the warrant. But for tonight, I just want to, I just want to highlight a couple of, a couple of things. Under Article 5, that is the payment of snow and ice deficit spending. It is possible. It's likely that there's going to be a small, a small deficit on the, in the expense account. But it's still unknown whether we can actually cover that deficit from the snow and ice wages account. It's possible we may not need this article, in other words. So we're going to, I'll, I'll be watching that, maybe able to pass that over. On the, okay, as I just mentioned, on Article 17, the FY21 budget, I'm working on draft motions now. There are a whole variety of funding sources for the FY21 budget. So we'll be scrubbing all those motions a lot to make sure that the numbers add up and, and those motions are accurate. On Article, Article 18, the capital budget article, under Item 5, the highway, the, under Item 5, it does not specify the address of the parking lot that's being reconstructed. And so a question, so questions have come up on that. So questions, you know, questions that have come up are, why are they redoing the highway department's parking lot when that was just done? So Mary has established a Q and A thing on our website, a town warrant Q and A section on our website, where that question is posted and an answer is now posted to that question. And we're going to have to, or I will make sure that on June 4, I'll keep talking about this to make sure that everyone knows it's 23 Linden. It's the parking lot at the town offices. And then on June 4, when we do our pre-town meeting and budget forum, I'll be sure to reiterate that to clarify which parking lot this is. And those, oh, yeah.
Peg lost her audio. She can hear us, and she's going to try to call in on the phone. Nope, she can, she's waving. She's trying.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have on the warrant itself. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that at the moment, but next week I'm going to, I'm going to bring forth a, an actual motion sheet to where it's concisely going to list the motions.
So are we going to have the motions in the annual town report, or?
The annual town report's going to contain the warrant just as it was posted. So the motions that are in the warrant will be part of the annual town report.
Okay. All right. Are you good, Peg? Okay. Any other, any other questions for Margaret, or are we moving on? We're moving on. So under new business, we have an appointment of Jeff Green to the Economic Development Committee for a term through 531 of, is it 2023 or 2021?
Excuse me, 2021?
Okay. That's what I thought. I think I printed this out before it was changed. Okay.
Motion to approve. Jeffrey's awesome.
Oh, okay. I haven't met him.
You haven't met? Okay.
Okay. So do I hear a second? Okay, Peg's making a second. All right. So we'll take a vote. Keith, aye?
I say aye.
Stone, aye. All right. Okay, motion carries. The next thing is a line item transfer for the zoning board of appeals part-time wages.
So you know we've entered May when we can start doing end-of-year appropriation transfers. Here's your first for this year. The, there is a, a small shortfall in the zoning board of appeals part-time wages line due to the amount of work there. We are looking at, the request has come in to transfer funds $675 from the building inspector part-time wages line and move it over to the zoning board of appeals wages, part-time wages line to fund the remainder of the year.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Peg is seconding it. And we'll take a vote. Keith, aye?
I say aye.
Stone, aye. Okay, motion carries. And now we've got a discussion that we could have on the annual selectman reappointments for terms expiring 531, 2020.
I'm sorry, we're just having a little technical difficulty.
Peg, I think your audio's back.
Oh, am I? Oh, with an echo.
Oh.
You can hang up now.
All right. Sorry about that.
Isn't that funny, huh? All right. Margaret, did you want to talk about this? You had made a recommendation.
On the which? On the?
The reappointments?
Reappointments. So I, I want the board, tonight is for discussion. So what I'd like the board to consider, as far as reappointments to boards and committees, take a look at what boards and committees have, let's see, have had a very minimal number of members on their committees over a period of time. So essentially committees that have had difficulty sustaining membership. Not necessarily bouncing up to three and then going back to two and bouncing up to three, but a, a small two, one member over a long period of time to see if it would be feasible to, to work out something different rather than having a committee doing something through project-driven work or something of that nature. And I didn't print it out, so I can't remember what my other, my other thought was on that.
They haven't formally convened a meeting during the prior fiscal year.
Yes, that have spent a long time not having convened or attempted to convene a meeting.
Yeah.
So if, so what I would ask, because this week is only discussion, but I would ask the board to think about instances like that and whether it's feasible to continue to reappoint the committee or whether remaining committee members or individuals can be tasked with doing project-driven work.
Okay. I know that you did mention the trustees of trust funds, and if, and those are.
Oh, yeah. So that's elected.
So that's changed through town meeting, I'm assuming.
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
If you wanted to eliminate that, that trustees of trust funds, that would have to be something that would go through town meeting.
Because it's an elected position, it's quite po, I don't know how it was adopted. The town would have to, we'd have to go back and do research to find out when that was first elected, how it came to be. And when I go through the bylaws, I can't see that it was established through any bylaw or chapter acceptance. But somewhere, at, at some point in the town's history, there was a decision made to elect the trustee of trust funds. So I can't, without doing that research and finding out how it was established, I don't know how it would be dissolved.
Barry or Eloise.
I think that that would be the shorter version of just talking to Mary or Eloise, yes.
When did it come to be?
I bet Eloise could like zap that out, too.
Okay. Yeah, because there are two different sections of that chapter. One is that it's elected. So my guess is that at some point, maybe the town, maybe the town accepted that or just took some sort of action to elect it. And the other would have been the board serving as the trustee of trust funds by default or by virtue of being the board of selectmen. So.
I know she asked, just to tell me what it was, so.
Yeah. So, yeah, we can ask.
Yeah. All right. So would you like this on the next week's agenda?
When does, can I ask a question through the chair? When does the board do the annual reappointments? Is it always in the month of May, before the end of May?
It's normally after elections, though. So I was wondering if you wanted to postpone until the next board member is in, in case they have input on this.
That's not correct. And also, the terms expire in many cases on May 31st.
I know, but we could work around that. I was just asking because that's one of the first things you do when the board reconvenes, isn't it?
I don't. Yeah, because I was unsure, and I haven't had a chance today to check the bylaws to see if the reappointments are governed by bylaw, the time period for them. So we can, we can look at that, but it could come back.
Why don't we, why don't we, well, we could talk about this when we do the agenda studying. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We're moving on to board questions and comments. Peg, do you have your audio back?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I guess you can.
Okay. I only have a few, so I'll go quickity, lickety split. So the sign for the center of town, it is now sitting in my hallway. I will bring it down to Highway on Wednesday and work with Fred Cummings. Tom gave me the number of the person who's in charge of where it's going to go on church property. So I'll connect Fred with that person. We'll get the sign up hopefully by the end of the week, which would be nice. Also dropped off was a rather large piece of vinyl. I'm hoping that Highway can also cut it into various sizes. They said that they would put the stakes up that we had for the scarecrows so that, you know, I'm thinking people, it can be cut, it can be left in the vestibule, love the word vestibule, of the town offices. People could come up, pick it up, bring it home, decorate it, and then place it in the church, churchyard. So that will be moving along for that. Let's see, Highway, all right. So graduation. We know that unfortunately, the seniors for Tejant and Assabette are probably going to get gypped in a graduation ceremony or a delayed one, if possible. So I spoke with Brittany at Cable, and what she's agreed to do is that if parents want to send in, you know, Janet, I'm going to pick on you just because of Guy. You know, Janet and family want to send in congratulations, Guy, maybe totally embarrass him with a baby picture. Put his graduation picture up there. Brittany said that she would post them. So it's just a way that, you know, the kids in town can be recognized for all they did to make it to senior and kind of not, not being able to have the ceremony. So I'll get something out on Facebook, see if people are interested in it. But Brittany was gracious enough to say yes, that Cable would run it. So thank you to her. And then also, speaking of graduation, another gal in town, Mary Beth Turbo up on Highland Street. One of her daughters is graduating from the advanced math school, and they have signs on their lots, you know, congratulations, you know, student, blah, blah, blah. So Mary Beth was kind enough to put me in touch with the person who does those signs. So again, I didn't know if parents of Tejant and Assabette kids might be interested. You know, obviously, it's all going to be at their cost, but just something, again, to recognize all the kids in town. So I will get that out on Berlin Neighbors Connect and Berlin Residents United, just to gauge interest in getting those going.
I saw that on the way, I took a ride out to Ashburn here this weekend, and there were signs in everyone's yards. I have senior, you know, at such and such a school for 20. It was very nice.
Yes. So again, you know, something to recognize, the seniors, you know, everyone looks towards their, you know, graduation day and making sure your tassel's on the right side and things like that. So I'll get that out on the two non-town official pages, again, just to gauge interest, and then just kind of step back and let people do it. But, you know, thank you to Berlin Cable Brittany for allowing it, and thank you to Mary Beth for providing the information on the graduation signs, and thank you to the resident of Berlin for the sign that will be up by the end of the week. So essential workers, Berlin, thanks you.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's all I got.
I, I have a question, unless Lisa, do you have one?
I have just two small things. I forgot to mention that Tom from King Printing also talked briefly. He is aware of only one other town that prints the town, the town report and sends it out to all of their residents. That town is Lincoln, which is considerably more affluent than we are. His recommendation as a responsible business owner was to print them in a smaller amount and hand them out at town meeting. Just so you know.
and hand them out at town meeting, just so you know. And then the other thing is Lori Chahan has phone town halls every Thursday that actually provide a lot of really good COVID-19 information. And you can actually go sign up for those, and they will call your phone when it starts. So if you're looking for resources or those types of things, or just an update on where we are as a state, it's a really good resource.
Okay, thank you. Mary, did you have something to add?
Janet Lammy has a question. If that's okay.
Sure. And then I have a comment.
Just wanted, can you hear me? I just wanted you to know that I saw signage already out on a couple of the Tohonto school, high school. They already have them. And I did reach out to Assabette, but I haven't heard back. I just wanted you to know that I, that I did that.
So, so Peg, should you call Diane Tousari at? At? And then find out if, you know, you don't want to have one thing going that you're doing and one thing they're doing. So, yeah.
No, I'll give her a call, or I'll drop her an email. Oh, look, hi, Jane. I'll give her a call and see what she's got going to share information. Yeah, it'd be kind of silly to have.
You can ask, but I want to call, you might want to call Superintendent Cooley?
Yep.
Okay.
It's actually Mark Hollick that's doing a lot of the, all my emails for Guy and all the Assabette things they're doing is, are coming from Mark. So you might want to reach out to Mark, and they're still trying to figure this out. They were really hoping to get a graduation on schedule, but that doesn't sound like it's going to happen anytime soon. So, okay, that's all I had to say. Thank you, Mary.
So I had one question for Margaret. Will there be a virtual meeting to discuss the River Bridge development study? Will the group that was together? When?
Oh, happy. Local officials. I hadn't even, I hadn't even gotten that far thinking about that yet, but that's entirely possible because I don't see how the stakeholders can get together physically. So I suppose we'd have to plan something. Yeah.
Okay. Just don't forget to, to, I, I'd be happy to attend.
Oh, yes. Absolutely. Well, you were part of the stakeholders group, so.
All right, that was my question. I think we should be all set, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Peg seconded. That was the happy dance.
Okay.
Good night, everybody. Stay safe. And again, I hope to see you all someday in real life.